I don't know. Start without him and we'll push him down. Wow. You ready? We'll go ahead and start without Tom. He comes when you're in. I'm gonna call the planning commission meeting to order for August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Stan, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Josh.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
James.
Here.
Candy.
Here.
Tom. Donnie.
Here.
I get approval of tonight's agenda. I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion and second roll call, please.
Donnie.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Candy.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
James.
Yes. And approval of July twenty-fifth minutes.
Motion to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Donnie.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Candy.
Yes.
We will open it up for comments to the citizens, and this is for anything that's not on the agenda. If you want to comment on anything citywide or other than that's on the agenda, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, anybody online? Brad? Nope. Okay, no old business. I'm going to go right into the public hearing. Uh, uh, call that to order, and we're gonna discuss item number one is the rezone request for the Taldol rentals requesting a rezone at one point. Right, I'm my my side there. One point five six one acres from C two general commercial to C T trades and services located at two ninety South Barrington Road. This is public hearing, so we were opening it up to the public to come up and and discuss this piece of property. This is item number one. Anybody want to discuss item one? Anybody online? Nobody? Okay, we'll go on to item number two. Is a rezone request applicant is requesting a rezone four point three eight acres both of from both agricultural and R three to R E. And this is located at ten sixty-four North Barrington Road. Item number two, if anybody would like to come up and discuss this one, please step to the podium. Seeing nobody in the audience, anybody online, Brad? Nobody online. Closing item number two, item number three, rezon request applicant requesting a rezon eight point four seven acres from agricultural to R two. This is located at ten seventy-six North Barrington. This time we'll open it up to the public. Anybody want to discuss the item number three? Seeing none, nobody online. I am closing item number three, moving on to item number four, which is a variance request. Applicant is requesting a variance for setbacks. The property is located at seven sixty-four, seven sixty-four Melbeck Road. I will open it up for public comment on item number four.
On the applicants.
You you don't have to, but if you want to, you can. This is really just for the public. You're not gonna get any comments back from us. This is just really for the public comment section. You betcha. Not seeing anybody, nobody online. Okay, I am going to actually close the public hearing on those four items.
May I ask a question? There was a a sign by my on the property of the storage unit.
Please, Rhonda, please come up to us, so everybody can hear you online, if there's somebody online.
Off the dial, that four sixty-two puzzle line.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a sign, and I thought there, uh, the storage was bringing up to the hearing. Um, the variance that they wanted the parking lot, which I don't have.
Think it's a waiver, not a variance.
Okay. Oh, I thought it was a variance. Do they not have to go part of the hearing?
Don't believe the waivers have to go through.
Waivers are not public hearing.
That's correct. Yes. Very good. Thanks, Rhonda. Okay. Move on to see where we're at here. Okay, we are going to go into the board of zoning and adjustments. Uh, meeting, I will call that to order. And item number one is the variance request. The applicant is requesting to variance of setbacks. Uh, the property is located at seven sixty-four Melback Road. Man, then now is your time. You you would like to come up. Just state your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Bozarth. I live at seven six four Malback Road in Tawny Town in the Liberty State subdivision. My husband and I are seeking a variance of six feet, ten inches from the rear setback of our property in order to build a pool. We have a sketch that was submitted to you as twelve feet by twenty-five feet. And when you add coping around the pool and a little bit of a walkway for the decking, it would encroach upon the twenty-five foot set by by six feet, ten inches. You have a narrative in support of our position, so I'm not gonna be redundant and read it or or try to to, um, spend waste your time, but I would like to highlight just a couple of points.
Yes, ma'am.
First, we did not set any special conditions or circumstances that resulted in our need to request the variance. We bought the house in May, four years after construction, so we had nothing to do with how the house was seated seated on the lot, how close it was to the setback, how far the patio extended. Uh, second, our lot falls under R three categorization under the city ordinances. Under R three, that applies to a lot that's point two six, which is what we are, but the R four standards are point two four, point two five. So we're right there on the verge between this, the R three and the R four. An R four setback is only fifteen feet. And so, you know, we're just, you know, like point one, point zero one away from having met that R four standard, and we wouldn't even be here today. We think R four standard with the fifteen foot setback is a little bit more reasonable to apply. Um, we talked a little bit in our narrative about our hardship. We are both sixty-seven years old. We moved here to be closer to our daughter and our three grandchildren. My husband suffered a serious spinal cord injury in July of twenty-one, uh, while surgery corrected the damage to the spine. He lives with nerve damage, and we believe that therapeutic benefits of a saltwater pool would be very helpful to his health. In addition, I've been diagnosed with osteoporos, osteopenia and arthritis, and we've read a lot about the benefits, therapeutic benefits of the saltwater pool that we'd like to have and available to us right out our back door. So. Um, fourth, the planning commission, uh, in two thousand and twenty, June of two thousand and twenty, this body approved a five-foot variance for Aaron and Byron Rourke. Uh, I'm sorry, Gorky, who live four doors down from us. Their lot is substantially the same as ours, eighty feet by one hundred and forty-one feet, and you granted a five-foot variance in order for them to have a pool in their backyard. So we feel that precedent has been set, and it would be unfair for you to undo that, as the same thing that you gave the Gorkys. Uh, finally, since I submitted the narrative, we have received approval from our homeowners association. I have a copy of the email. Should you need that documentation, but the homeowners approach of association has approved our request. Um, we believe that denying our variance will result in unnecessary hardship toward us, and it will deprive us of the reasonable use of our backyard to the ability to have a pool, entertain family and friends, and to seek those health benefits I mentioned previously. I would be happy to answer any of your questions. I also have representatives here from Blue Haven Pools that submitted the schematic. If you have any technical questions about full construction, I will defer to them.
Thank you, Melinda. Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion on this one before we discuss.
Motion to approve variance request.
A second.
A motion and second, open up for discussion for the for the board. I did see where they were asking for six ten foot, and we are oh, we are open for five foot. Is that correct, Brad, when we were looking at that?
Yeah, I'll have Mark. Mark can read his synopsis on that.
Mark, would you like to read that, please?
Yeah, uh, our concern is is there's a point five foot utility. So our recommendation is instead of the six inches that it be a five foot setback, um, based on this one two.
So if I'm reading that right, the six ten is worse than the five foot, or the five foot is better than the six ten? What is, I mean, I'm just asking, is the is the is the five foot a a need, or is the six ten a need?
Uh, if we get a five foot, we'll make it work. Um, we had a design, um, that was going to have a little bit wider deck. Again, we're kind of concerned about a fall hazard getting off of our patio to the decking and not falling into the pool. So we wanted sufficient space, obviously. Um, but we will be very pleased if you, um, approve a five-foot variance consistent with what you've done for other neighbors, and we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Okay, very good.
Any other? Mark is a a one foot, ten inch. It's that big a deal?
Well, I think we gotta be. I think we gotta be consistent with what we've done in the past regarding pools in this area. And we are concerned about that utilities, but, um, you know, encroaching on that utilities could cause some problems uh, in the future.
Any other questions?
And there are, there are other pools in that neighborhood that have set that precedent, right?
I don't know about others. I know there was the one that that's just down from them. That was at the five foot, so I don't know if there's any others in the same neighborhood that have been granted that. Uh, I would be, I would be speaking out of out of turn if there is, but I knew that one that was close to them. We we did approve a few years ago.
Okay.
And you guys can make five foot work, right? So do I need to amend or we need to amend this somehow, or?
You can amend it if you if you feel the the need to go to the five foot. Yes, sir, because right now it's the six ten. Please come to the come to the mic so we can hear you, sir. Just state your name.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
A little thing this with Blue Haven. My other question would be is if the other person, the Gorkys, if they would have requested six feet, ten inches, would they have been granted that?
I I I don't know their scenario. I don't know how far their decking came off the back on on their pool size. I don't know if they went to a smaller back piece of it. That that piece I cannot. I cannot.
To your question, was what intended to be really a big deal? So that's why I was asking. So if we could have it, that would be great for the spaces, but if not, we would make the.
So you can, yes, I mean, that can be amended to that if you if you feel the need to to amend that to the five foot. Or if you're okay with the six ten, we can leave it as is.
Curious to know what everybody else is thinking. Well, whatever we need to do to make this thing work is all I'm getting at.
I I would just say, as as commissioners, and what we try to do is plan is try to be consistent. You know, if anybody that would come and ask another, if something like this was coming in, that we'd be consistent. If we're gonna do five foot one and then six ten for that, that's not gonna be inconsistent. So I would just ask that consider the five foot as we recommended.
Okay.
And Ja- Josh, I would agree with that, and I would second that on the five foot.
Okay. I'm I make a motion to I guess amend the waiver to from six foot ten to five foot setback.
Variance.
Variance.
I second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? See no other discussion than this motion is to approve a five-foot uh, variance. Yes, yes, sir. I'll give you.
My name is Daniel with Blue Haven Pools. Um, now, my question is there can't be no decking on that twenty-five foot easement? Say if you we get the five so they can have like a decking on that side.
Uh, Brad, is that they can have decking into the easement. It's just if it needs to be tore out, it will be tore out.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, so I mean.
Pavers are okay then?
I think pavers are fine. It's just a matter of if utilities come through there and need that.
We'll have to tear that out.
Yeah, I have to tear that out. So I mean, that's up to, yep, you betcha. Hope I addressed that correctly.
Question. I'm sorry. Uh, Melinda Bozarth again. So I thought when you gave us the five-foot variance, and it's like our setback is twenty feet. So as long as we're not now in the twenty-foot area, then we'll be good, and nobody will come and tear up my decking.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You betcha. Yep. Very good. Any other discussion? Okay, this is a vote for approval of the five-foot variance on the back setback. Roll call, please.
James.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Candy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right, we are going to close the board of zoning adjustments and open up the planning commission meeting and call that one to order. First item there is a rezon request for the Taldal rentals is requesting a rezon of one point five six one acres from C two general commercial to C two trades and services located at two ninety South Barrington. Um, Brad or Mark, are you are you doing this one, or do we have a representative? Yes, sir, come on up. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Philip Taldo, and I'm I live at thirty-nine eighty Tahoe Circle in Springdale. And I'm requesting the the, uh, change in zoning for that to accommodate a, uh, office warehouse facility.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion before we discuss.
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Motion and second, open for discussion. Discussion from the commission.
If we rezon this to C T, C T will for sure work with what you're gonna build, correct?
That's what I've been told by staff.
Okay, can we verify that? Because on Castellini, that warehouse, they got told to rezon it to C T, and then setbacks wouldn't work, and then it was big.
Yes, this is these, and if you look at what I put into your packet, a packet at, uh, let's see, it's on page. Uh, the use comparison chart, I highlighted the ancillary warehouse.
Yes, sir.
And that is what he is requesting. So that will fall under the the C T zoning.
Perfect.
You can also, though, do an ancillary N C two with the conditional use, correct?
I'm sorry.
You can also build the same warehouse. N C two, you just need a conditional.
Conditional use, yeah. That'd be an extra step, yeah.
Instead of rezoning, could?
Well, you'd still have to rezon it, and then you'd have to follow up with a conditional use.
Yeah. Yes, I don't understand that, because by the chart, it says.
Cause it's C two now.
It's C two. If you wanted to rezon it to N C, you'd have to do the same steps we're doing tonight, plus follow up with the conditional use application.
Okay, but for where ancillary warehouse under C two, it says C, which is conditional.
Right.
So it could stay C two. He would just need, instead of zoning, he needs to do a conditional use permit.
Correct.
Is that an option?
To be honest with you, I'd rather have it zoned appropriate for what I'm gonna do there and not have a a condition on it. Um, I don't know what that could entail in the future. Um, yeah, I, yeah, I'm not clear on it, to be honest with you, but I understand that, uh, conditional use can be withdrawn at at some point. And the and the zoning cannot. Is that correct?
Really, that's true.
So I'd rather have it straight up zone.
Yes, sir. Thank you. What are the comments? Yes, Candy.
I think Josh, if I understood you right, the setbacks are different for these two zonings for C two and C T. Are they sure of the setbacks and in that, is that what you were talking about?
No.
Are they sure of the setbacks are different for those two things?
The engineer, the engineer from E S I consulted with staff and, uh, uh, it's appropriate, I mean, and doable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark, will they need to, uh, widen a portion of Bandini? Would that be part of?
That's part of.
Yes.
Development, correct, yes.
And do we feel like traffic from this said warehouse or business would, uh, die up our fire response?
Well, uh, we did secure some funding for Bandini. Um, probably won't be available to next year, probably in the next fall, but, uh, it will widen Bandini all the way from, I forget the name of this street over here, all the way over to Barrington. Um, and also improve that intersection there at Barrington and Bandini.
Oh, we're a year away from those funds.
About a year ago.
Do you plan on moving quickly?
You know, if I'm still alive, I don't think it's I don't think it's a problem.
That'll be part of the development, uh, to make sure that you improve the street according to the master street plan. Yes.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? I will move to a roll call, and this is to to, uh, for a yes on the rezoning from C two to C T. Roll call, please.
Josh.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Candy.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number two is a requir-
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Taldo. Thank you. Item number two is a rezon request for applicants requesting a rezon four point three three eight acres from agricultural and R three to R E. This is at ten sixty-four North Barrington.
I would like to let the commissioners know as a point of information, the original maps that I sent out Friday were incorrect. The ones that you have in your current packet are correct. Uh, as far as the description of the land, what was listed on the staff report is correct. Just when I've sent the maps out originally, they were incorrect. You do have correct maps in your packet as of tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mark, you gonna be discussing this one, or you have applicant here? Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nikki Littrell from Lewin Associates. Excuse me, and our clients are requesting this as part of a track split. Um, so item two is the four point three acres on the south. Uh, they're requesting this, they're siblings, and they're going to be, they already live at this property. Um, and then the next project, the next number three is going to be to split off a half acre on the northwest side, but they're gonna do that and then sell the rest of the property to the north. So this rezone was requested as part of that, because it wasn't fitting with the agricultural zone.
Very good. Mark, did you have anything to add?
Just that the future land use that you all approved, um, a few months ago, does show this area as residential estates.
I will ask if there are anybody in the audience that would like to discuss this specific item. Seeing now, well, I will ask for a a motion on this one before we discuss, please.
Motion to approve the rezoning for ten sixty-four North Barrington.
Second.
Got a motion in a second and open up for discussion, commission. Questions do y'all have, if any? Not seeing any, I'm gonna ask for roll call, please. This is for a rezon, or this is for rezoning it from, uh, agricultural and R three to an R E. Roll call, please.
Candy.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Uh, rezoning on number, item number three is applicants requesting the eight point four seven acres of agriculture to R two.
And yeah, that's the part that's encouraged. So it's point, yeah.
It's a half acre? Okay. Thank you. So that is a point five acres from agriculture to R two. And R two would make it the half acre.
Right.
So I will, uh, you wanted you want in discussion on it, Nikki, are you, you're good?
Yeah, it's track two on the survey.
Okay, very good. Yeah, it's the, that's the one that has the house on it now.
No.
It does not. Okay. Okay, and we'll open it up for discussion for anybody out here. Not see anybody. I'll entertain a motion from commission.
Motion to approve the rezon request for ten seventy-six North Barrington.
Second.
Motion second, open it up for discussion, commission. Seeing none, I will.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what what is the reasoning why we're going to R two rather than, say, R E?
I think R E has two acres.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
This is a half acre lot already.
Okay, so is R two, I guess, the
That's a half acre.
When we get it.
Yes, that is actually the half acre.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a roll call.
Candy.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just for a point of information, these three rezones do go to our city council for their final approval, so that will be on the next city council's agenda. So that's just to give you a F Y I. This is the first step of the process.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to item number four is the preliminary large-scale development. Uh, M H Backhoe is requesting an expansion building of eighty-seven hundred square foot and a concrete pad of forty-eight hundred square foot at six thirty West Henry de Tante Boulevard. Anybody applicant here? Yes, sir. Please come, state your name and address. I'd love it.
I'm James Gerson, T D A, the engineer on the project, uh, at the thirty thirty North Runa Bay, Arkansas.
Thanks, James.
I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Mark, do you have anything on it?
Uh, I I have Zach. Zach, you wanna come up? Uh, you did the review on this.
Hmm.
Good evening, commissioners. I, uh, I did the review on this. Uh, it's actually on the scale of our scale is pretty simple. Uh, essentially a second phase to, uh, of large-scale development that went in in two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
Two thousand and nineteen, and was completed. Um, uh, as far as your range is concerned, it was all incorporated in the original drainage report, so there's really not any big revisions that need to be done. All the landscaping, promontory landscaping was done during the original phase. We are adding a little landscaping around the parking, the new parking. We've got three new parking stalls, and, uh, we're gonna replace some dead trees as part of this project, but, uh, pretty simple. I will note, this is the first applicant I've had that, uh, has gotten to P C with no specific project comment, so. Good, then, my, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I will entertain a motion before our discussion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and second, I'll open it up for discussion.
Any part of the construction gonna be in that floodplain?
Uh, no, it's gonna be directly behind the existing building.
No other discussion? I will ask for an amendment to the motion because there are some conditions attached to that, if we could, please.
I'll amend my motion to approve. With conditions.
Second.
Thank you. Motion being seconded. We have another, ask for roll call, please.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number six is a waiver request. And this is for, wait a minute, let's get that. Um, I may have, yeah, I may have. I'm a little ahead of myself. I've already approved that one. I'm just kidding. All right, item number five is preliminary large scale development for. NHS Tonnitown LLC requesting a mini storage building located at. On 6.122 acres on Pose Lane. Applicant here?
My car starter, 4811 West New Bridge Road, Fayetteville. I'm a CK civil engineer and I'll be here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do you have one on this one too, Zach?
Oh, I can just give a general overview if you'd like.
Go ahead, come on, give us that overview.
We've got a mini storage down on the, on a, what was a larger commercial track. Uh, this has been split recently through a, through incidental track split. A few weeks ago, the back half is being developed into a mini storage. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's got 400 square feet of office space, 33,000 square feet of conditioned space and then 29,000 of unconditioned storage space with some garage type RV parking stalls. Uh, the project's got off-street parking, stormlar conveyance, buffer landscaping, public and sewer water connections. Uh, and then the access to Pose Lane will be via a 50-foot platted access easement. So if you have any questions, we'll try to help.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the LSD with conditions.
Thank you, sir, with conditions, motion and.
A second.
Second, do we have anybody from the audience that wanted to speak on this one?
Okay, back. Ron, the down, no, four, six, two, five is a lane. Again, why did I have a hearing sign out on that property if there was not gonna be a hearing and? So.
Rhonda, I probably did that in error. So.
Better safe than sorry sometimes.
Right.
At least you knew about it.
Can I ask the guys to explain the difference between the, the, the back is gonna be seen, well, they normally put in those detention ponds cement and you guys are doing something different. I'm okay with it, no problem. I just wanted to explain a little bit better what it is and, and I'm okay with no parking spots smaller to get it.
And I'll say, Rhonda, also, we're gonna get to that on, on one of the waivers, if that's okay. Yeah.
I think I'm requesting strobe lights in the back. Just kidding, Rhonda, I'm just kidding.
Sorry, Rhonda.
Totally kidding. So we do have a motion and a second. Open it up for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I will go ahead and entertain a roll call. On item number five, this is the approval of preliminary large scale development.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now waiver request for the same location requesting a waiver from Tonnitown Drainage Manual. Section six, other designs and considerations, and this is the Pose Lane location. Yes, sir.
All right, so just explain what it is. It's a simple, it has same engineering characteristics as a concrete well. It's just a green afterturf. Be installed, it will function the same way, just a new science. It's coming along that will function the same and meet the drainage goals that are concrete as well does. It's just. A different way to do it. It looks better. It's not a big path concrete nor pond. But that's all it is. Nothing. That's evolutionary.
Would you guys notice a low impact type of element?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion. First.
Make a motion, we. Prove the waiver request.
Second.
Motion second, open up for discussion. What questions or concerns do you have?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, our code says it should be concrete. And. This is a. I guess new technology. Anyway, it's, it's a grid. I, I looked it up, but. It allows grass to grow up through it and you can mow it, right? I checked with. Our public works guys, Zach, I don't know how you feel about it. I didn't get to talk to you about it, but. Um, they prefer concrete, they said. It lasts longer, it's more permanent. I, I don't know. Why is it you're wanting to do this instead of the concrete?
We just wanted to do as a greener solution to, to swell at the bottom of the pond. It, I mean, it's sort of same purchase. It's made of. Plastic related that allows grass to grow. I mean, it's not something that's gonna go away quickly. It's braced into the earth, so it stays in place. And it lasts a long time. It's not something that's gonna go away in five years and be gone.
What, what is the life?
I don't know.
Expectancy of it, you know?
Is it more cost effective than concrete?
Yes, a little bit. We don't have long swells in this, so, but it'll probably save maybe five or $6,000 of the project.
What you got? Can we hear from? Zach?
Or, um. Maybe a new technology to Tonnitown, but it's actually been around for almost a decade. I know I've specked it out when I was a designer. On several projects in some of the bigger cities that do require low impact elements in design. So I mean, maybe new to Tonnitown, but it is a tested technology. Um, there's the same purpose, you've got, but different function. So this would be the green. Uh, the greener path. I know when you drive into the subdivision, it's the first, and you look at the detention pond, it's the first thing you see. See that? Concrete streak right down the middle. So this time we get, we still get the reinforcement and the turf stability and the central channel of a detention pond without actually having to see that concrete channel going down it, so. I've done it both ways. I'm not scared of this or, or. How to say it, concerned with this issue if the, if the commission wants a more green alternative to the traditional concrete trickle channel, so.
Thank you. Is that in the southwest corner?
It would be both detention ponds.
Oh, both of them, okay.
Yep.
Both of them are on that west side. Yeah, okay. Any other discussion, commission? Yes, sir, come, come up to, I'll let you.
Larry, 9657, our mighty wrote, my only question, if we grant this waiver, variant, whatever. Is it something that we need to do in our code? Or is it something that we can leave it, as you said, it's concrete? Is it something that we need to adjust in our code or just take it on an individual basis? This doesn't happen very often. That's my only question.
Thank you. That's something we can address. I think it needs to be on a case by case scenario, but I mean, it depends on. Location, size of pond, maybe, depending on that. Zach, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds about.
No, when you do detention pond design, I'm sure. CK can chime in if I say something wrong, but, uh, you know, a lot of times those bottoms of the channels have, are minimized to maximize storage volume. I think your slopes were almost 1%, you know, typical, you know, a lower pond would have a half percent. Drainage isn't even necessarily an issue on this as a well, so. Um, I, if you guys wanna look at the drainage manual and maybe adding more LID or environmental aspects like some of the other cities are doing, I'd be happy to. Take a look at it. Um, right now, case by case basis, there is a situational aspect of some of this, so I think case by case for now it's fine, and then maybe long term, we can look at doing some more LID stuff in our drainage manual.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion, commission? I will ask for a roll call for the waiver request approval of this.
Candy?
Sorry.
Bye.
Candy? Yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number seven is a waiver request for neighborhood storage, requesting waiver, Tonnitown's Coda Ordinance Section 1. I wish I could read that. 153210 regarding off-street parking. Yes, sir.
All right, so this one is for mini storage. The clients are typically, they come in, they drop their stuff off, they leave. It's the one per thousand square feet, I think, would. Acquire us something like 65 parking stalls right now, which. Yeah, with the pool, that would be 96 stalls. Um, you know, we're part, once the storage units are full, especially, you know, they have. 10, 11 people a day kind of come in and get change your stuff out, but there aren't a bunch of people there at the same time. Trying to stack parking and it's not a situation where you need a bunch of parking. You know, it's usually one person, one truck, maybe two vehicles and a trailer and they drop stuff off and leave it there. So with codes written more for warehouses than typical storage.
Any comments from citizens out there?
I'm okay with it.
Is this the design of the storage?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm, there's gonna be, you're gonna be held to that, right? Okay, very good. Just double checking. For a friend.
There you go.
Okay, I am going to open up for a motion.
Motion to approve the waiver request. For neighborhood storage.
And a second.
Motion is second, open for discussion, commission.
You gonna do any? RV boat storage there?
And there's gonna be some.
Go ahead, come, by the way, we can get you recorded, sorry.
There's gonna be some enclosed RV boat storage. Um, on the west end, every one building, and then there might be some, uh. During interim, during phase one of the project, uh, it's not a time, it's, I think, maybe 20, they're installed. That year.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know how many parking spaces you're wanting to put in?
Yes, ma'am, we have, we showed 24 around the instant building.
Okay.
That 24 includes the two handicap?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I thought I'd read that, yep. Thank you. Any other questions? I will ask for a roll call, please.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight is a waiver request for neighborhood storage. Section 152151 regarding. Material use. On the LSD for exterior building.
Um, Brad, could you put up the exhibit? All right, so our reason for this request is partially because we're 1,100 feet off the highway, so. Match the masonry type structure on the building, we won't really be doing. So what we've got, Brad's gonna show is architectural rendering to the project. And it's, we've got more of a intent to blend metallic wood frontage with, with landscaping in front. Which will blend more with the actual environment that's. In our location. Um, you can send into that first picture, Brad, that you're covering up. I'll do my best. All right, thanks, sir. First picture just showing from where we're kind of in time to street, what the actual buildings look like size wise. It's another 400 feet back after you hit the exit, they do our actual. The time that from out to back. And that's from the exit, that's nothing how it run. You're the next one to do the right. And this is from about 500 feet out. We've got the, we've got a lot of landscaping shown, which will blend it in more with the nature of what's going on actually in that area. Or, um, in that kind of, in the building with the wood, frontage kind of blends a little better with the actual area than a masonry. That. What architectural feature would in that actual environment? Uh, and then. Let's go.
That picture right there, that's, that's the frontage.
Yes, that's the frontage.
Okay.
As from rest of 500 feet, you have 600 feet to the hallway.
Got you.
Yeah. Um, and this is just from the. Uh, left from the west looking in.
Yeah, just second, let us get it up on our screen here, just a second. Not on our screens. Sorry. I looked up there and saw you were looking.
No, our screens just went off.
Oh.
Oh. You keep the power thing?
I don't think so, no, our power's on. Why it's? Yeah. Go ahead, you can, you can talk about it, we can.
Um, so we've got, there, we're to the east, we're keeping plenty of trees, this from the west. We've got a lot of the landscaping and we've both got fence so it'll shield the buildings that aren't on the front edge that are, aren't conditioned space that are gonna be more traditional storage units. But they'll be shielded from. Much of the view.
There you go, we got it back up, thank you.
So. I'm sorry, that view that we just looked at, that's from actually Pose Lane, if you're going down the right. Oh, from the west, okay, okay.
It's a click around this.
Here's the aerial view looking down on the entrance. It shows just kind of, that we're putting a, not just a. Keep solid up front, we're showing, it's gonna look, be a good looking building and we intend to make it neat or the intent is to have it be a good product, not just something that's a cheap. Metal building up front and make sure everybody can. Do what we're looking for. I'll go next. See a little better there. Just where the landscaping still has quite a bit of ability and then you have to fence into it, covering the areas back. Then there's the intended front architectural front building. It's the solid, uh, architects intending on you.
What, what is the darker brown? What is the darker brown's material?
The dark brown is a metal, it's a kind of light wood metal.
The vertical?
Yeah.
Okay. I think my, the vertical, so on the corners, that'll be a wood type fiber cement, like almost like a. And then it'll be a dark gray, vertical red metal falling down, and then we'll break that up with the wood fiber cement to kind of accent. So rather than masonry or, or basic request, our waiver request was to be able to use the wood fiber cement instead of block.
Okay, I will, I will entertain a motion on this waiver, number eight.
Hey, Kevin? Can I mention something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just wanted the commission to realize that. Way the code reads is that this requirement. Of this 75-foot facade. Does protect all the residential and all this area around here is all residential zone. So I'd be a little concerned. To do a blanket thing, um, in not making sure that we're. Meeting code on the three sides that are actually residential. Not so much the frontage. That's why our recommendation was is the, is to really look at what you're doing. On the three residential sides. You've got.
The, the east side, the south. The, the east side, the south side, and the west side.
Yeah, you've got the east, west, and south side are all residential.
Okay.
Zones, plus you've got. Houses on the uh east side, and you've got all those apartment complexes along with the new. Uh building going up, so. This doesn't really, does this really show what the back uh areas are gonna look like, which are basically the major. Small storage areas, it doesn't show that.
That one, I mean, the uh, the west side.
What, what is the, what is the south side gonna look like, I mean, the, the frontage looks, you know, pretty good, but. You've got those smaller storage units that are in the back that looks like they're.
The south side will look like the west side. That we had adjacent property. You'll have your, your building, you'll have your fencing, you have your landscaping.
The west side storage, are those all? One level storage units, or, so those are all just? Okay. Not much facade you can put on a door. Yeah, I will entertain a motion on this one before we discuss. Yes, ma'am, come on up, Ron.
Um I heard you say there's some easement to come for the drive or the road in, so where are you guys actually coming in? You know, it's a private lane, start off that pavement, so where are you guys popping in on? Okay, there's a drainage there, are you guys gonna address all that to come over it and?
We're, yes, we've got a plan for drainage that we're not gonna increase anything that's. Coming through there, we're not gonna back it up, we're gonna be sure that it all goes as part of his condition, essentially.
Yeah, only had one condition that we have around the drainage up there.
Oh, it's a bad one, so yay, thank you. Well, it's, it's gonna probably help some. It's gonna help what we got, so thank you.
Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the waiver request. With conditions.
There can, they don't want a condition on that waiver.
Conditions for approval, blank.
I'll take a second on that one. Motion second, open up for discussion.
I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the metal. We have all those metal buildings down four twelve. Uh which a lot of people complained about. Even though it is backed up off the road eventually, like Mark pointed out, there's gonna be houses. Uh so it's. Eventually gonna be just as visible. In my mind. But I think the metal's a problem.
What else?
I'm not crazy about all the metal either, is there any way it could be broken up?
Well, right now, as our waiver is, is, is what us has proven this.
Right, okay.
If we go a different direction on it, then they'll have to go a different direction on it, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yep, so that'd be something that they would have to.
Right.
Decide if we're, if we're not looking at that. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we just do it on the exterior facing uh buildings, the ones that are on the outside of the lot? Which you wouldn't see the ones on the interior that are blocked by the buildings? That'd be something that we could be approved.
Will we amend this waiver or no?
I think we can amend a waiver.
You can probably put that as your condition.
As a condition. That I thought we had to begin with.
And that, that kind of touches base with, Mark, doesn't that fill your concern?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So yes, if you'd like to amend with a condition on that, you can do that. If you'd like to.
Speak for a second?
You sure can. And what was your name again?
Alan Wills on the half of the storage.
Yeah.
Um so this design was something that I, I saw online with some other facilities out west in Colorado that they were using. To try to spice up the metal, so it's not just a plain red. Um we would be more than willing to look into some other options to dress it up even further, sometimes if you turn the metal and you have different. Sections that are horizontal mixed with vertical, it can aesthetically look. Almost kind of cool, totally, you know, different than just a, a plain rib. In addition to accent of that fiber cement on, say, quarter panels, certain dimensions off each corner. Um so we would be more than willing to, to look at some options to accent it, and. We felt like our, our proposal with the rendering was definitely on the forward-thinking edge of storage design to try to. Make this a product that's neighborhood friendly. So.
We got Josh.
Um make an amendment to this waiver, or add a condition, I guess.
Okay, you can add one.
The condition would be that the waiver is only good for the. Not the sides facing residential, so is that the south?
Uh the north is not residential, and the south is still residential.
Southeast and west.
Southeast and west, all, all three sides of those are residentials.
Okay.
Even though there's apartment that's still residential with the duplexes over there on the, on the west side. Yes. So they'll. Yep.
Uh with something besides masonry work um. That would.
I don't think it's as much as the masonry piece of it is, as it is the. The metal, metal piece of it, I think that's the, the sticking point on.
So if your concern is about metal, Ryan Melton, uh if your concern is about the metal, what about a privacy fence that fits? In between the buildings and the landscape buffer, so your concern is about seeing that metal, but if we have a. Say a six or eight foot privacy fence on there that has no visibility through it. Your visual from anybody standing will never be able to see the twelve foot building. From how far setback is. So with that appease, your worry about everybody seeing the metal or complaining about it, because they wouldn't see it at all. In that case.
So you would have landscaping, then a privacy fence?
A six foot privacy fence on a twelve foot tall building.
And eight foot, whatever you wanna call it, but yeah, essentially, you know, you're standing back, me is six foot, you know, seeing back from there, and then the privacy or the uh. Landscape buffer too. Could appease that. We can go as high as you need, really, but. Really gonna block that metal from anybody's view on the residential, and then obviously, the whole point is not even see the privacy fence, we want the landscape buffer to be able to. Pretty much hide it.
So, okay, I'm, I might be a little bit confused, but this building here that I'm looking at is taller than eight foot.
That's the front building.
Right.
Would have to be in the condition, that's, that's not visible, but really what it was addressing would be your concern about the residential on the other three sides. So the front, whole different concern, that's probably fourteen, but it's tall.
Okay.
It's not really worried about what you're saying is going all the way down the size where you have the smallest any storage.
That's tough to visualize on here. On how it tears down.
Right.
Going back, you kind of see the backside on the west side, it tears back.
That's, to me, to me, that, to me, that's a really nice looking storage building, look at, look at our pictures. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something here, can, can we pull up an aerial photo and look at what residential, what houses are around that? What, what would really, anybody that could be objective to that?
Well, to the, to the west side, we've got uh, is it two houses down there on Posa? Rhonda, and I don't know who her neighbor is. I'm sorry, the east side, with, south side is.
Field, but zone residential.
Zone residential. So with the landscaping piece of it, with the trees, is that not, I mean, I, that's gonna be blocking. A lot of it, and then with the commercial in the, in the front piece, that's gonna eventually block. Um some of that, that piece of it too, so I mean, I, I get on the. Um I think I've seen something like this one on Elm Springs. Maybe not to this extent, but it's a new one they just put in, it's kind of, uh, I mean, it looks pretty, you've probably seen it.
One right down there from our job, that big one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, I think that is that metal? Uh it looked like it with some faces on, or some different faces on the corners.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a big building.
It is, see, that's, I think they've got storage up top too, which I don't understand that, but.
You don't wanna carry your stuff upstairs?
I would not wanna carry it, I wouldn't even wanna put it in an elevator and take it up. That's correct, yes.
So.
Because it'll have landscaping back there too.
Mark, help me out.
Yep.
With your concern again. About the facade on the. Facing the residential areas. She told us to.
Well, I mean, you got a commercial plugged in that's surrounded by nothing but. Residential, so you know, the value of their property. Should be concerning to them if you just put a bunch of metal. Buildings up with nothing that really reflects, you know, the character of what I. See a neighborhood, a mixed type of neighborhood commercial. I mean, if you, that's the, that's the only concern I have, and I think that's one of the main reasons why our code. Indicates that to protect those residential areas. So um I know that they're gonna be doing, you know, you plant trees, but how long is it gonna take for a tree to grow big enough to be able to? You know, where you can't see in there and uh, you know, got a fence up, but. I'm there trying to protect the value of the. Current property in that residential areas, that's just.
So, I, I agree with you, and we've had complaints on metal buildings before, so this is an issue for me. So. If I was to make a, an amendment or a condition to this waiver. How do, how do I need to word it, is what I'm asking now.
Why you wouldn't grant the waiver? Yeah, I mean. That's one way to do it, um unless you wanna put a condition on it. Specifically, um it doesn't sound like that they're, they're talking about different types of metals, but. You know, there's stonework, and I know that's expensive, but. What do you want the town to look like in forty years? I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking at, so um. Y'all do, you guys, that's what you're here for to do, is make some decisions, and. I'm just giving my opinion.
Appreciate.
And what, and what our code says.
The uh. Wood looking stuff is masonite, you said. Kind of.
There's two products looking at. Uh one is a wood look fiber cement board, and then another is a engineered, almost a laminate product. Um that looks identical, so it's similar in price to a brick on the laminate product, uh the wood fiber cement comes in longer runs, so. We're, we're evaluating both, but it looks like a, a stained piece of wood, and I've used it in other commercial applications. In a place that you might put a stained piece of wood, but I don't wanna stain, so, so from a maintenance standpoint. It's a, it's the same look, but a, a long-lasting product that carries usually a thirty-year warranty or more. So that's. It's just a different look than a brick or a tile or something else, but we thought that really popped well with that dark metal. Make a, a better looking building.
Could you do the exterior all in that?
Well, I don't think if you did wood down the whole exterior, seventy-five percent, it would really look that good, I think it would look pretty odd, I think. I think the wood was done as an accent, and I feel like if you made that a wood wall, it wouldn't be much different than a horizontal fence look. So I don't.
Maybe break it up with some.
I feel like, I feel like we could break it up for sure, um but I don't know that the seventy-five percent rule would really help us on the breaking it up part. I feel like it would be more of a twenty-five percent if we were to use the wood to break it up in certain panels down the side of the building. Or turn directions, or, you know, it could be horizontal on the corner up front, but then at some other point, we go at an angle, and then another angle, and then. Horizontal on the end of the building, I think we could do a lot with design on that, but I just feel like the seventy-five percent mark. Is something that I, I don't know how we would make that work without just a solid brick wall, and that's really not the look we were shooting to go for. I feel like there's a lot of options out there to make this look good that don't require a seventy-five percent masonry wall.
Can I put my two cents in? It sets way off the highway, and I know, run to down. Four sixty-two thousand way, and I know we request it would be pretty on the highway, and I get it, I know it. But I think they're bending over and I'm liking it, but I, it sets way off that highway. And I don't know what's gonna go in front of it soon, commercial, so I don't have an issue with it, I'm just glad it's not residential. So, I mean, that's my thoughts, I've been looking at it for many, many moons, so.
Did we get any feedback from any other neighbors or anything, any other responses?
No, not on this.
I mean, I respect what you're saying, Mark, you bring up a good point, and trying to be consistent and all, but yeah, I'm thinking. Thinking, what about on the south end of Tonic Town with the residential estate houses? Where barns and shop buildings are built that are all metal and million-dollar residential estate homes areas. So we do that, so that's why I just wondered, I wonder, I wonder if we're pulling taffy on this one, I just, that's just my thought.
Very good. Current is just the regular waiver request that we have before us?
If, if we granted the waiver. Would, can we put a condition in there that says they would do something like he was talking about? Artistic with the metal or? I, I just feel like we need to.
You can, but again, you know, when, when you look at the, when you look at it, I'm not trying to be a devil advocate here, but when you look at it, look at the distance from the. From the road, the distance and the, the, the landscape in there going to put up. On the sides, on all, 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 all three sides, really, the front's gonna have a little, that's got some in there, but that'll eventually be commercial. Is this gonna be detrimental to? The three neighboring sides, which would be east, south, and west. Is it gonna be that detrimental?
Yeah.
With the current design that they've got.
Right, and that is my concern for the residential, I know. Rhonda said she doesn't care, and I know it sits way off the highway, but there is residential around it, I mean, it can be seen, so.
I think there's a R three there, but they're gonna come in for an R four, I'm just kidding. Totally. Totally strike that. Strike that.
But I do like the design, the pictures, uh it looks really nice.
Yeah.
I, I would like to add a condition, I would like for them to go ahead and put the privacy fence around. Versus the metal with the green screen. That way, till the trees grow up, there is some blocking.
I don't know if that'd be a condition to this waiver, probably a condition of the large-scale development.
Yeah.
I was going to propose.
Landscaping plan?
A condition that might satisfy what you were kind of alluding to is perhaps on the. Residential facing east, south, and west buildings, there's a certain percentage that we go with this wood fiber cement board to accent it during the artistic. Breakup, whether it's twenty-five percent or thirty-three percent, somewhere in that blend, we can have quite a few accents that the architect can. Render in there that I think would make that front corner building. Kind of consistent with the remainder, with, it doesn't completely mess our side up, but also accomplishes the artistic. Aspect that you just mentioned, so. I would propose that as a mutual.
Thank you, Alan. Yep.
I, I like that idea better than a privacy fence, because sometimes privacy fences can get pretty rough looking.
Pretty quick.
Pretty quick, yeah.
Get it, yeah. Okay.
So, are we gonna? As far as a condition, thirty-three percent of the visible building as its design, or? We just gonna wait?
That's a question you can ask yourself. That's a question you can ask yourself if you want to, to change from the current. Motion, which is the current waiver. With the current design. If you'd like to amend that, we can. Um. Putting a percentage on is going to be tough. Um. I don't want someone going out there and measuring and saying it's not thirty-three percent, um, so. Let's be cautious on a percentage that we actually put on there. Um, yes, sir, I'll, I'll give you just one, give me just one second. Um, I just, I would be cautious on us putting a percentage on there that. Um. Um, it sounds like they're going to try to do something to make that look a little more peaceable to us. Well, even though if a peaceable isn't, is a word, but we'll, we'll go with it.
Sounds like one.
Okay. So, I mean, it's, it's up to y'all on, on how y'all want to word that piece of it, but I would be cautious on the, on the percentage piece of it to try to. To get that, um, in there. Yes, sir, you come up to the mic, I'll let you say one last word.
That's, that's great. I, you said it for me, I was gonna, Mr. Davis's point was those million dollar homes, and that's. Just to make it look really nice, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. So you can amend the waiver to, to, to add some more of the. Wood looking design to. Parts of the southeast and west if you'd like. But I would need it, uh, an amendment to the way, yes, sir, oh goodness.
One more item that, there is a metal shop building on the southwest corner of that property now. Already existing, so we're looking at a light gray metal building on our back southwest corner.
And I'll just let you guys know, this is how, how they kind of word this. Just a member may make a motion followed by a second, the item may be voted upon, motion can be approved, approved with conditions, deny or table.
Very good. I'll entertain a, a, a change, if not, we'll go to vote on the current.
How, how do we word it to, to?
Yes, ma'am. How would you like to word it?
Um. I think something to the effect that. All visible sides, north, south, east, west, be broken up with the different material. Not just.
Very good.
Do I make a motion? To approve with the condition. That all visible sides from north, south, east and west. Be broken up with a different building material to, to a pleasing architectural design.
That's a lot.
That works.
Can I get a second?
Second, I was going to question you, but.
I, 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 I'm, I'm stuck with it, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to go with it. I'm not sure exactly what this design is going to come out to be. Um, but I'm going to trust y'all on this piece of it. I will ask for roll call. With the waiver and condition.
Okay, Josh?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Motion approves. Passes, sorry.
Item number nine is a right word, flavor request for Pam Trucking School, request a waiver of commercial design standards for property. Located at two ninety-four and two ninety-six Bandini. Yes, sir.
I'm a Jim Laspeca architect with a benchmark group at Rogers. So we're presenting Pam on this and. Given the context of the previous conversation. Um, and actually you can see on the screen, but what we're talking about, the gray area. Is Pam, Pam lot, so that's for reference, and I think, uh, we're looking at that image as we got brought up here in a minute, but, um. Be happy to explain in more detail, uh, our request for the waiver and our reason for it, and then, um. Yeah, can you questions?
Anybody out in the audience wanted to talk on it? Anybody online?
Uh, not that I can see.
Okay, very good. I will entertain a motion on this specific waiver. Before we discuss.
Motion to approve the waiver request for two nine four and two nine six Mandini Avenue.
Second.
Motion second, open up for discussion.
Do not like the metal. Oh, yeah.
So we had, uh. Thoughts on this one, it is why, why you might approve this one versus, uh, uh, what you want to see on the previous one. Um, three reasons, um, first one is the siding. We are, uh, within the Pam lot, this large gravel lot with a lot of trucks and trailers in there. Uh, there are existing metal buildings on site. And we're replacing this, um, is within that context, so we're within the Pam compound essentially. I granted on the south side, there's the, the field, but there's a section of that that's term his own commercials, so there will be a buffer there. Um, beyond that, uh, to take this to, to the ordinance one five two, not one five one. I think we place it way out of context with the rest of the, what's going on in that area. Um, second thing is, uh, visibility, and we talked about that on the previous ones as well, but really it is locked in. Uh, there's no frontage road where we can really see from there, uh, it's within, uh, there's only one access point to that background area. And then the other, uh, thought along that line is the use of the building, uh, it's for Pam's training of their truckers, so it's kind of a private use, private. Space, no public's going to come there, uh, so it's not going to be anything outside of what they're currently doing on the site already, and so our feeling is. Yes, it's metal building, but it's not going to alter what's already going on in that, in that ground, like at that site, so. And. We're not doing a plain white metal building, because you got the image of the previous one in your head right now, but what we've got is all metal. But there is some color accents, a little bit of not, or just, not just plain, but it is metal.
Thank you, sir. Did I entertain a motion on this one already?
Yes.
I did.
You got a second?
Y'all have any questions about it, other than you don't like the metal? Is that? Next to the current shop? Is it? Okay.
Yep.
And to be honest with you, when I. I, I go by there a lot, and I don't even really recognize the shop back there, so I mean, it's, it's, it's tough to already see back there, um.
If I may, sorry, the, the shop building is up there on, on the right, correct, and then.
The long building to the bottom is actually mostly gone.
It is completely gone, they, they did a rebuild, um, to. I don't know where we're at right now. Inside, there's a metal building, current areas for storage. And so we will be adding it over.
The building that you're be adding to, is it going to be a north, south facing or east, west, like the one we removed?
That was square.
Square, okay. Okay. What questions you have commissioned? Andy?
Is it, is it actually going to be on this gravel lot here? That's where it's going to be, not over there in the. Right there, okay, I see, yeah.
And, uh, I will say, we are, they did send elevations for this discussion. Brad has gone back to get them back over here, but. But I'm so well, it's six weeks ago, they didn't get the package, so we're going to make sure they, I can pass a paper copy, Brad, if you want to look at that.
Y'all want to see that? So you can see what, what the, yes, that'd be great if you could, please. That way they can at least get an idea of. Start down at Candy and let her take a look at that. We have any other? Donnie or James, y'all got anything down here? Before she passes it down, so we can kind of see it. Oh, there it is.
You know, you know, the one, one thing I, I do question though with, with the water flow south on Barrington Road, is everything looking good on that in terms? Water, rain runoff and everything with water flow. Seems like we, on the south end of Barrington, it gets pretty nasty.
To be honest, let's, that, that can, this is.
I just wanted to say, it's, it's kind of different, that's part of the large scale development, this is just the waiver. We'll make sure drainage is a, a problem.
Yeah.
With the construction plans.
Didn't mean to cut you off on that, Donnie, but let's, let's stick to the, stick to the waiver. We'll get dry, we'll stick them with the drainage later.
Brad, could you put, put that picture back up of the aerial view of it? What is, what is all around it?
One second.
So to the west is the Posa Lane Houses. Which there's parking over there, so that's not really going to be affected by the building. To the south is R three.
Correct.
And to the. West is open land, and I'm not sure what that zone, looks like R three as well. With the grain, so it's all R three, R three. Residential currently.
So there could be some residential there behind it.
Possibly.
At some point.
Possibly.
There's a portion of that where you see the end of their driveway to the south. And it's, uh, the ownership is GSP NWA, y'all see that? There's a portion of that is still commercial. Before we get into residential.
I know the subdivisions that back up to the industrial park. Some of them came in when they were, when Mathias was asking about those metal buildings. And I think they complained about the metal. On that. And I, I understand that this is going in an existing compound, but at some point. Like, we're going to have to adhere to this, like we, we granted their. Their waiver for metal building. For various. Conditions or. However you want to put it. But it's, at some point, the, we got to do away with these metal buildings. That's just a straight, uh, metal building.
And if, uh, if I can speak to that. I read the ordinance to speak to seventy-five percent of the material on one side, right, the entrance side that faces. The main road, so we. Add living a little bit there, there's a camera on the exact word, but, um. Our side of the building, our building's not going to face, it's going to face an adjacent metal building, essentially. So there's really no way to get, even if we, I went ahead and did the material change on that one side. It's, it's not going to be visible to anybody except Pam, like it just, it just wouldn't help. If, if, uh, and I don't, if I understand the order sitting correctly, let me know, it, it doesn't speak to the other three sides, right, we're not. We're not talking about the entire ship.
Brad, is that correct on that? Is it all, is it all four sides, or is it just the, the? The entrance side of the pit building?
Yeah, I do not know right off the top of my head, but that.
The, apologize. Or has it, if we go ahead and dress the entrance side. It, it really is blocked by the other buildings, so you're not going to be able to see it of benefit of it.
Is that space into the west?
East.
East.
Yeah, that shop was.
With the shop, yeah, um, my, yeah. One direction is challenged right now.
I have to picture the Google map.
I know, I know.
The summary right here says, this isn't the exact code, but it says one five two. One five one, which describes the primary material shall constitute at least seventy-five percent of the wall area. Excluding glass, the primary exterior material shall consist of a combination of brick, textured concrete block, stucco. Wood, synthetic stone or natural stone. And, and this isn't the, I don't know that this is word for word in the code section, but. It says seventy-five percent of the wall area, it doesn't say seventy-five percent of the wall area. To the front of the building. And it, it may in our code, but this doesn't say that.
Yeah. Yeah. They're talking about the visibility from adjacent public ways.
No, you're fine.
You're good.
Well, you guys are looking, let me, let me give you what the code says about it for sods. All commercial institutional triplex, quadplex and multifamily structures shall be architecturally finished on all sides. With same materials detailing the features when visible from the public realm or adjacent residential areas.
So visible from the west would be. Facing their current building. So that's a buffer between it, I would, I would think. The south would be a piece that. I'm not sure which, which one of these.
That would be the one side that'd be visible to public area or residential.
Yes. Then to the, to the west. That is going to be, you got, uh, parking before you get to the residential over there. Big space in there, so I mean. Is it visible? Yes. Um, is it an eyesore? I don't see it as an eyesore, but that's just strictly my opinion on it.
How tall is that building? Couldn't read that.
I think we got a small print. I couldn't read that if I tried. The peak is a twenty five. Twenty. Twenty to the. The parapet wall.
Oh, my concerns of the metals stand.
Okay, current, um, motion is for the current waiver of this. And it's a motion for that. Um. Once again, we can move forward with the current one, or we can. Request a condition to be added to it, that is up to. You all on that piece of it. How would you like to move forward on it? Move. Go ahead, move forward currently, okay? Any other questions then? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call on the waiver request, sorry.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
No.
Candy? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, so our three zoning rezone requests that we had tonight, could you hand him this speech? We're sorry about this. Proprietary information. So these three rezone requests that we approved will move to city council for their meeting, their next meeting. Then I will move to. Um, well, you want, y'all see the staff reporting? You have any questions on it? You want to go over any of that, Mark?
Uh, just that we did a final walkthrough on the AutoZone.
Okay.
Earliest morning. And they did get their, um, temporary. Certificate of occupancy, uh, there was just a few minor. Things that need to be complete, the only thing, just I wanted you all to know, we've asked for them to. Give us a twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, performance. Bond, uh, if you go out there. They could not, uh, finish the sidewalk properly, uh, because AT&T didn't move their line. So as soon as AT&T moves their line, they'll be able to, uh, we'll have money to be able to make sure.
So as soon as AT&T moves their line, they'll be able to, uh, we'll have money to be able to make sure the sidewalk is at its. Width that it needs to be. It's kind of in that corner there by the um, entrance. We want to tell you that we have secured some funding. For engineering and environmental for the traffic signal and tunnel. Underneath the. Henry DeTante, along with the Barrington Henry DeTante signal. And uh, we'll be working, starting to work on that next year. I've also completed a ten year capital improvements plan. Um, that if anybody's interested, I will be making that presentation to the. Council at the COW meeting. Um, and we'll hopefully get them to embrace it. Uh, we need some long term planning. Especially in roads and some of the other. Major uh. Areas that need to be addressed, so as far as I know, that's all I know.
Thank you, council, do you have any questions on the? Building activity report or the? Projects report that they gave us?
Let me state to commissioners, I know I made this comment last month, but we did go ahead and move. The uh, residential portion in June over to commercial. So there's some differences in that, just based off what. The city staff has advised me to do, so you will see the changes in June. Of those uh, evaluations.
Thank you.
Staff have any other comments?
Appreciate you guys.
Candy, you have any comments?
No comments, just I appreciate everybody coming out and. Mark and Brad, I appreciate all y'all do and. Everybody putting up with my questions.
Donnie with I E. James.
Uh, just. Thank everybody for coming out. Enjoyed the. I thought the uh. The engineers did a good job in explaining. You know. To me anyway. What they were trying to get their waivers for.
Thank you, Josh.
Uh. Just one quote. If there was life on other planets, we would have sent them some foreign aid by now. James Gregory.
Very good, roll call.
I know that.
I don't have any comments other than thanks, commission for for all that y'all do and it's. Sometimes it's tough um. For us to. Make the decisions for. Tony Town, so I mean, appreciate y'all's feedback and comments, and it does, it does make a difference, so. If we have no other comments, I will ask for adjournment, all in favor. Thank you.